I call a meeting to order for the first stand of budget meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no gender adjustments tonight. And this meeting is being recorded. I advise we have to say that, too. You want to do this one? Okay. At this time, I'd like to... Why don't you introduce Pat Frankamano?
Certainly. Yeah, absolutely. It's my pleasure to introduce Pat Frankamano, who is the president-elect of the Mass Association of School Committees. He also currently serves on the school committee for the King Philip Regional School District. He is here tonight to present recognition from MASC to our former student, James Aguirre. And he's joined tonight by MASC Executive Director Glenn Kuchar. Pat.
Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing us the time to come here tonight. MASC has put into place this recognition award, which recognizes students who have maintained a... been able to achieve a national award, whether it be for music, whether it be for any other academics like we have this evening, or even in sports. So, when you think about it, we're giving an award for getting an award. But it's important. It's important because of when you think about what it took to become a nationally-recognized individual in your field. The... you had to go through, if I understand you correctly, you went through the state championships, competition. Then you went to nationals. And at nationals, there were over 20,000 people that were participating in this competition and in various categories. And you came out as the best of the best. That's a huge achievement. And at MASC, we think that we should be recognizing those kinds of achievements. So, James, you can come up. Mr. Aguirre, on behalf of MASC, as well as your school committee here, present this award to you for your wonderful achievement.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
James, if I can, who's this individual sitting next to you?
This is my lovely teacher, Mr. Ryan.
Just before I go, when you hear criticisms about public education, when you hear about public education not working, I challenge all of you, when you hear that, to tell James' story and to tell the stories about everything that goes on at this school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, James, while you're still here, on behalf of the South Shore Regional School District, we'd like to present you also with an award that the school committee and the superintendent are issuing together for outstanding performance at the 2014 Skills USA National Competition for earning a gold medal in nursing assistance. Your extraordinary accomplishment will be celebrated for many years to come. Best of luck in your future endeavors.
And now, James is heading right back to college after having come up here for this meeting. Thank you, James.
Do us proud, James. We have approved the school committee minutes for July 16th and the policy review subcommittee meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Hanover and Abington. Any discussion on it? All in favor? Student Spotlight, award presentation by the executive... We've already done him. Student Advisory Council, Shannon Arlen.
Hi, I'm Shannon Arlen. I'm in the graphic program. I'm a senior and I'm from Hanson. So, Student Council is doing a CAN drive, and we're starting it the first week of November and we're ending it in the week of Thanksgiving break. And then, we're also starting a toy drive right after that. We'll start it the first week of December and end in Christmas break. Drama is doing a series of one-act plays and most likely going to competition this year. Outdoor Adventure Club is hosting a corn maze. And athletics are off to a slow start so far in the beginning of the year, but hopefully improve and have a winning season. Yep?
Thank you.
The school.
Any comments to Shannon from anybody in the board? No? Thank you, Shannon. Reports of the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Couple of discussion items that I'd like to bring to attention of the committee. In discussing with Mr. Hickey various operations within the school committee, within the school function and so forth, we talked about credit cards. I know credit cards have come up in prior discussions. And we talked about specific aspects of credit cards, such as being able to register for evening school classes for here in the brass lanthorn, to be able to accept credit cards as the two major highlighted functions that we could possibly look at. Further down the road, you could buy yearbooks with credit cards. You could do all sorts of various other items. It would require, you know, putting in processes and controls and procedures and so forth to make sure things are being done properly and to tie into the accounting office and so forth. But again, I'd like to just get the approval of the board to move forward in exploring and actually implementing some of the credit card numbers that we talked about, so. I'm not sure if official vote is required.
I was just going to say, you probably initiated on your own, but we appreciate bringing you before the board. And if the board has any questions, this is time to ask.
I have a couple of questions. Dealing with credit cards, I know that when you go into a store and you purchase something with a credit card, the store has to pay a small fee.
Yes.
And the reality... A thought on that is that the store wouldn't have made that sale without the credit card, right? So, a small fee to whatever credit card you use. That would hold true with us, even though we're a public body, we would have to pay a fee to a credit card company?
Yes, there'd be a fee. The fee structure for credit cards these days are about 127 pages long.
Right.
Based upon rewards cards. And it's roughly anywhere, a little bit less than 3% is the...
What would we gain in business coming if allowing them credit cards, if not allowing them credit cards? I mean, if kids are going to... If they use them here, if outside people use them here, I can understand that. But if a student is allowed to use them to buy books within the store, they don't buy the books anyway, or get purchases anyway, cash or credit card, so we'd lose money in the long run, probably. Just... I'm just throwing it out there.
Again, not knowing the volume that we'd have to deal with, yes, there would be a charge for that. Items such as the brass lanthorn and the evening school, they are self-sufficient, so any fees related to those activities would be paid for through the enterprise account, so there would be no impact to the budget. Moving forward, having been on some boards before, I mean, the way I look at it is that we are a business in addition to a school. And we need to sort of make things as convenient as possible to the audience, to the students, to the consumers and so forth. And accepting credit cards in today's world will make the cosmetology program a little bit more, again, make it easier for the people to come here for lunch, for cosmetology, for auto repair at some point down the road. I mean, in my short eight weeks here, we've dealt with numerous bounced checks along the way for various items and so forth, you know? You know, prom tickets bouncing checks, various little things. And again, we go and charge back the fees to the person who bounces the checks, but again, without that. Plus, from an accounting standpoint, the more credit... You know, the less cash that you handle in the credit... In the restaurant is a plus as well. There's more money that's being done, you know, on the credit cards and therefore there's a safety aspect that's there as well. So, again, we need to fill in procedures to make sure everything is buttoned up and done properly. But again, there's a lot of opportunities, yeah.
Of course, with credit cards, if you have in school, people still be able to pay cash if they didn't have a credit card.
Oh, sure.
What would be the safety plan for the school? I don't think today's been credit card fraud, you know?
Call it hackin' in?
Yeah, hackin' in.
Well, we've got... We've been dealing with Rockland Trust, who's our main bank, and with one of their large suppliers and third-party administrators. So, they have controls. Everything's internet-based now. And again, they're working hard every day to make sure that things are safe, so.
So, what you're saying, this will increase the revenue to the school, to the fact that they're here, or going to pay us, wanting us to address this a lot?
Possibly. Again, I know that, in speaking to Leanne, who's in charge of the restaurant, I mean, there's a marketing plan out there that, again, trying to generate more business.
Yeah, okay.
You know, if... Just like any of us who go to a restaurant, all of a sudden, if you walk in, there's a cash-only sign on the front door. It's like everybody's checking their wallet to make sure they have enough money to eat that. So, again, it's just convenience thing for the population.
So, where would the bookkeeping come in? Would it be in our rooms?
Yes. Pat and myself would be in charge of separating it. And again, that's part of the procedures, to make sure everything's all checked up, so checks and balances. The next item was the discussion about opening accounts at local community banks. I know, having been, you know, from Abington and been on a couple of nonprofit boards, the local banks normally step up and help all nonprofits and various organizations and so forth whenever possible. They're very integrated into the community. Here, we have savings accounts now that are located at the Mass Municipal Depository Trust in Boston. The interest rate currently is .19%, so it's very low. Doing analysis of the local banks, all the local banks have higher interest rates. And again, in speaking to Abington Bank, they're willing to work with us if we're looking to put more money in. So, and again, with the South Shore VOTech, looking back to invest back into the community, it's the mutual bank that's in Hanover and I'm in... With it in Hanson, Pilgrim Bank and Cohasset, Cituit Federal located in Cituit, Abington Bank, Rockland Credit Union, which is both in Hanover and, you know, to sort of sprinkle some of our savings account money amongst those banks to help, you know, again, further put us into their communities and let them know that we're investing into their communities as everybody else is investing into us. So, that's just, again, I think within the framework of the treasurer's position, I could do that anyway, but I just wanted to wait and, again, run it by the committee that I see with their...
The reason we went with Mass Municipal, and I discussed it with Jim earlier, was because they were paying better at the time.
Yeah.
And I think I was chair at the time then to involve Kelly and I discussed it. And we all agreed at that time that we try it. But since the crash, I'm calling it the crash, they've been paying lower than anybody. I mean, our personal checking accounts pay better than Mass Municipal right now, and the personal checking account doesn't pay much. So, as a chair, I'm all in favor of it anyway. And I think we should support Jim in the process of doing it.
I have one question. What is actually the difference, like you're saying, that's lower than what... You know, what's the difference in percentage?
Well, I mean, Cituit Federal is .20, Pilgrim Bank is .35. Overall, doing a quick analysis, Abington Bank is .60.
What are we making now?
.19. So, there's a potential, you know, here's a potential to... Again, interest rates are very low across the board, but by moving some of this money over, there's a potential to earn another $3,000 to $5,000 a year in money that can help it down the road.
It's a lot better than $300 or $400 a year.
Does he need a motion of support?
No.
No.
Just support Jim in his endeavor.
Okay. Next item on my piece is the treasury report for August 2014. Again, the front page lists all our checking accounts and investment accounts, total cash balance of $3.3 million. Again, it's been the summer, so things are cleaning up a lot of the summer work right now with the paying of the bills and cleaning up all of the end-of-the-June encumbrances and so forth. During the month of August, our revenue was $491,000 from the assessments from the towns that came in. Other revenues from the chapter 70, we're getting the $321,000 from the state every month. So, our total revenue is $813,000. So, again, checking along pretty well. Our expenditures during the course of August, again, on page three, $293,000. And overall, we have no requirements for any budget transfers at this point. We're in good shape, but however things are moving along, so things running smoothly. Update on the audit. Bruce Nolling and company, they've been out for a few days. We're at a point where 96% done with everything. I think Bruce will be on the agenda for the October meeting to present the financial statements. And there seems to be no problems moving forward with that, so. That's the treasury report.
Do you have a vote on the treasury report?
I make the motion to accept the treasury report.
Second, Ed.
Second, Britman. Any discussion? All in favor? No budget transfers?
No budget transfers, yes.
Okay. Chairman, subcommittee appointments. You all have a list of the existing subcommittees and who's on them. Does anybody wish to be put on one? Anybody wish to come off of any of them?
Maybe wait.
Okay. At this time, the chair will reappoint everybody as they stand on the printout of June 214. You stand on your existing committees. I have a comment on our F-16 budget. The administration would be starting, have already started working toward our next budget. So, it's just a heads-up to the school committee members that will get ready to, by November meeting, give the entire committee and the administration a figure that they're going to work with, so you can discuss it with your communities. And I hope that you don't let them dictate to you all, but you are the representatives of the school committee, and I'm hoping you all use your own common sense. The next one is the legal subcommittee. We have four applicants for new attorneys to represent us, and we have... We don't have a committee on that, do we?
We're looking for two volunteers.
I'm looking for two volunteers to be along with me on that one.
What's that for?
To interview attorneys and firms to see if we're going to replace our existing council.
Okay. Do you want to tie with that?
Okay. One of them?
I'll do it.
Jack? Okay. That'll be Bob Muller, Kenny Fair, and Jack Manning. And we will have a subcommittee meeting within the next probably two weeks, just to discuss it within the three of us of how we'd like to do it, set up appointments or... We could recommend we don't want to do anything as well, but...
Okay, you're saying two weeks. What... I talked tonight to the superintendent, total fourth through 20th, I'll be gone, so before that, I'll be in Florida for two weeks before. I don't want to miss a meeting. I don't want to... You don't have...
I think we can squeeze...
We can.
Yeah, we can squeeze it in before the fourth.
All right.
We'll let Tom let you know.
Yeah, I'll be next Tuesday till the following Monday, but I'll be back that week.
Okay.
So, perhaps the last week of September? We could look at something the last week of September.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
You're good, don't worry.
I'll leave on the 21st.
Great.
And at this time, I'd like to change the February school committee meeting. It falls on vacation... School Vacation Week, and superintendent has planned a vacation, and so we'd like to work around him. He's been very cooperative with us and done a good job for us in his short tenure as superintendent. So, I would like a motion of the committee to either go the week before or the week after. I think you would like it the week after?
It's a... Either way, a week after the school vacation week, Mr. Chairman, would still allow us to certify a budget and fulfill our regional obligations 45 days before Cituit's town meeting. It would also give us a couple of extra weeks to see where the budget situation is at the state level. So, the week after is preferred.
I'll make that motion.
How second?
What's the date we're looking at?
25, February 25 instead of 18.
Cituit made the motion. End of the second minute. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. The February meeting is now February 25.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Superintendent Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll take one thing out of order, only because it's transition, and I say from what Bob was saying. Document six in your packet is my proposed timeline of budget events. I've provided this to you each year, and it mirrors what we've done in the past. By engaging with our cost center supervisors and department heads from early October until the fall advisory meeting in early November, allowing the administration about a month to take a look at these requests and recommendations, and then bringing to you at the December meeting a presentation. So, coupled with any feedback you're able to give me in the early fall, I would, as we have in the last several years, I would bring you an initial presentation in December. And then, I'd be able to bring something back with further feedback in January. And then, we can still, as I said a moment ago, we can still have the time through February to certify. With the change in the executive office, the... A new governor is allowed a little more latitude before he or she puts out the first budget of their administration. Typically, we expect a governor's budget the third week of January. It could be later this year, but we have enough time in the calendar to do that. So, this will be... This is roughly running on the same schedule. I just wanted to bring that memo to your attention. I'll come back to a couple of items at the end on facilities and MSBA, but now I'd like to turn it over to our administrators, who can unpack the opening of the school year, highlighting a few things on the agenda. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
I'm sorry.
Important call.
Snow.
We opened on September 2nd. We opened with Professional Development Day for the faculty. And in addition to the required trainings, teachers participated in a presentation by our school psychologist, Christine Darsney, on the teenage brain, which was very informative, and it gave the faculty a little bit of insight as to what students experience or why they do what they do. Fall athletics are underway, and we have football, volleyball, golf, cross-country, and cheerleading teams this fall. And our Parents Association and our Viking Athletic Association are both already meeting. And our annual craft fair is coming up on Saturday, October 18. So, mark your calendars. We have four new staff members in the high school. We have Kristen Baikman, who is an English teacher, and she came to us from Middleborough. We have Dan Condon, who is our new electrical teacher. We have Lindsay Cunniff, who is our new culinary arts teacher, and she came to us from Attleboro. And we have Patricia Henderson, who is our new librarian, and she came to us from Dyton, Rehoboth. And last but not least, we have our Hall of Fame coming up on October 25th, which happens to be homecoming weekend. Our school council last year recommended that we move Hall of Fame events to homecoming weekend, so that it starts to make more of a true homecoming. And so, we'll be having an induction breakfast on the 25th. Our Hall of Fame committee will be meeting... They've already had one meeting, and they'll be meeting again tomorrow to review the nominees for the Hall of Fame. And we will be selecting five people to be inducted this year. Any questions? Okay. Mr. Aubrey.
Mine is nowhere near as fun. On July 1st, Chapter 222 went into effect, which affects schools in two different ways. One is through discipline. It sets up a due process. And I'm happy to say that, once again, South Shore was ahead of the game. We have a due process system, Ms. Collins and myself, that pretty much fits everything we need, so we don't have to change a heck of a lot. The only thing we do have to change in this law is before we could suspend a student, we need to have a parental meeting prior to. Afterwards, we could have that... We could have that meeting, suspend the student, and let the parent know. Now, we need to bring the student... The parents... The student's parent in and have a discussion with the parent before we suspend the student, which means that we've had to make a location where we can place these students while we're waiting for the parents to come from work or wherever they might be to have this discussion. So, we have allocated some aid time out of the budget without increasing the budget, and we have taken over a room that we're going to use for that to be able to place those students there. The other fact is something else we're also ahead of the game. Chapter 222 also addresses attendance and that you need to have roadblocks or steps in the way to prevent a student from being absent too much. The way the law reads, it's after five absences, unexcused absences, you need to send a letter home. We already do that, but at three, okay? So, we, once again, are ahead of the game on this. Students who are absent more than three times on a cycle, unexcused, would get a letter home when they get to five. That's too much for us. They would go before our attendance committee, which is made up of an administrator, a teacher, and a guidance counselor. The student and the parent would come in, and we'd discuss why they should have the right to earn back credit and how they might earn back credit. So, none of that is guaranteed, but that's all part of the law. But we were already doing that stuff. So, other districts, you might hear your own towns having trouble with this. We're ahead of the game, and we're in good shape, I'm happy to say. Mr. Hickey.
I would like to introduce our new guidance curriculum. Traditionally, students at high schools may get to see their guidance counselor three, four, maybe five times a year, maybe a little bit more as a senior. With the new guidance class that we are implementing, our students will be able to see their... Be in touch with their guidance counselor upwards of 18 times a year. This class will be held for all four years, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. Classes will be held during the shop cycle. And topics will focus everything from freshman year, transition into high school, who we are, who's to know around the building, study skills, organization skills, working through the four years to senior year, job search, career search, resume writing skills, interview skills. We are happy to partner with Your Plan for the Future, which is a program through MIFA, the Massachusetts Educational Financing Authority. They sponsor a program called Your Plan for the Future, which is an online search organization tool that students, teachers, parents... tool that students, teachers, parents will all have access to. It'll be a place where students can build their career plan. They can do career searches, they can do interest inventories, they can do skill profiles, and all of that gets funneled into a career plan that will help them investigate different career clusters, specific jobs. The, the online program will show them where schools are available, what salaries are available, what future opportunities are available. It will host scholarships. There's over, I think there's like forty-two hundred different scholarships hosted there. We'll be able to add our own scholarships to it, and all of this will be done through this guidance curriculum. So they will meet, like I said, during the shop week as part of a, to reinforce strand four employability skills, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. One thing that we, I neglected to put on the agenda was, we are, on October third, from twelve-thirty to two-thirty, we are having a career job fair with the efforts of Mr. Stan Zabaski. He has contacted the advisors from every program. In addition to that, he has checked with the South Shore Chamber and their database, so he has contacted many individuals from the industry. Currently, we have probably about ten positive responses. We're going to start out little, and hopefully each year will grow bigger and bigger. And this is to help our seniors get in touch with employers for their co-op program.
What's the guidance? Thank you. Mike, could I see you before we leave? I just have a word to ask you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the administrators for a very smooth start, start to the school year, as evidenced by many of the comments that they've made. Direct contact with employers, growing advisory committees, reaching out to alumni, finding out what they're doing after they've graduated, these are all very, very important themes that, that we intend to focus on. And you'll hear more about the guidance curriculum, the career plans that our students will have, so that when we talk to any student in this building and we say, "What's your plan?", may not be the same plan they had last year, but no one's going to give an answer which is, "I don't know." And so that is key, because a student who is focused on that next goal is someone who's engaged, who's motivated, and who understands the value of the education they're getting here. So kudos to the team for starting off the year this way. To wrap up my report, facilities update. You may have noticed the school colors on the tiles on the floors you walked in. The folks this summer did a very nice job, but we're caught between two worlds right now. If you look down, you will see the school colors, and if you look up on the walls, you will see the cranberry and blue from nineteen ninety-two. Our open house this year, which, I'll state the date in a second, but our open house this year, we will be on one palette, and not two. Our open house, you've heard me say this in the past several months, but just to, as a bookmark, Saturday, November fifteenth, from ten AM to one PM. This is the first time we have run an open house on a Saturday, and the faculty's willingness to experiment with this idea is much appreciated. We will, the guidance office will be starting the process about...
What's the time?
Ten to one, Dan? From ten AM to one PM. And we'll, you'll start to see ads showing up in your local papers and the usual advertisements that we do. It, we're still going to have tours, we're still going to do all of the things that we've been doing, but instead of having an evening open house in December, which sometimes butts into weather and holidays, et cetera, we're eager to see how this works. So one, one color palette, for anyone that shows up by November fifteenth, that's what we're shooting for there. Beyond the flooring in the three-hundred wing here, tomorrow morning, we will, we're going to have somebody begin the foundation work on the concession stand. We had to move a couple of wires. That is all set now. And then on September twenty-second, we will have our engineers from Merrill Associates meeting with the Hanover Planning Board for the plans for the maintenance building. And again, just as a refresh, there's no immediate work on the maintenance building. The first thing that we need to do is to show the town of Hanover what our plans are for parking, the location of the new building, and we have money in this year's budget. I would anticipate, once we get the plan, the design, the bid process, it'll be sometime in the spring that we'll be working on that. So I'll definitely be keeping you updated on those items. And with regard to MSBA, as you know, we are accepted into the accelerated repair program. We're going to be replacing our boiler. Last week, we were assigned an owner's project manager, a company called ExpertCon Incorporated from Dedham. I've been in touch with the OPM that was assigned to us from MSBA, working on some terms of a contract with them. And then we've also been assigned a designer, and the name of the design firm is RDK. And the way the process will work is, we secure a contract with the OPM, who then will assist us in negotiating a contract with a designer. We will be, we are on the MSBA board's agenda for an approval of a new boiler in March of 2015, hence the term accelerated, in the accelerated repair program. So once we get the OPM on board, and then we get a contract with the designer, then we will move ahead with that work. The board ultimately would approve something, and at that point, I'll be bringing back to this committee, I am, I am pleased to report that any, any vote of the board in March will allow us, in our respective town meetings next spring, to not only bring them an annual budget assessment, but we'll also be bringing them an additional article relative to the boiler project. So more on that in a few months, but certainly the process is underway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
New business, delegate to the Mass Association Cool Committee Conference, usual delegate is Mr. Salvucci from Whitman. Does he wish to volunteer again?
I'm willing to do it again.
Any others wish to? Dan, you're hereby appointed. We'll let them know that you'll be the vote.
Right, it's all we need to do is, as we did last year, I'll be for the hotel. I don't stay in the big hotels much, but I do my own thing. But you need to...
We'll help, we'll arrange for registration as we...
Right, so that I can walk in, you know, and delegate.
Absolutely. Yep. Good.
And you find in your package the superintendent's annual goals. What's coming on there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As part of my evaluative process, I set annual goals, and in the, since the new educator evaluation system has come into play, I brought this to you around this time. So I'd ask for a motion to approve these goals.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I had triples on that one.
Go ahead. Yeah.
I go with Ken and Mark. Cohasset and Hanson. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Surface decorations. You have a sheet listing them? And we need a motion. If you want to make one motion for its entirety...
I'll make the motion for the all surface.
Citrus, made the motion, Hanover secondary. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Harassment policy. I'll let Superintendent go over this a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, through the policy subcommittee and to the full committee for a first reading, there's a document number ten in your packet, bringing these policies back to you a second time. Polly Ditchfield, our HR coordinator, was instrumental in compiling this information, streamlining policies. So, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, what I would propose as a motion that would encompass all of them would be a motion to modify and recode policies JIAA, policy ACAB, policy JBA slash JBAA, policy JIFCA as written, and also to delete policy JIAB.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Hanover and Abington. Any further discussion? All in favor? Warrants. Do you have the list, Ken?
Yes, I do. Okay, warrants for approval, warrants one and two, totally one million fifty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars thirty-two cents.
Second.
Second by Citrus. All in favor? Okay.
Warrants three and four, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
In total, warrants one and four, one million seven hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second?
Some...
Whitman?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Anybody have any requests for action?
Yes, I have something I'd like to talk about. In the past, I talked to Tom, something to look into about using our classroom where we had an outstanding student in health. Maybe we can use our classroom for possibly EMT or paramedic class. We can start it here, we can use our classroom a way of renting out. We have the parking, we have the facility, we are a vocational school. I know that there are, I mean, I was coming back through COVID and the signs for, you know, EMT training, you know, with a number on it. You know, maybe that's something we can look into.
There's one right down here, one three-nine, last field two.
Right, my son, my son went through his paramedic class in Pembroke.
That'd be something like about the night school, actually.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, night school. Right, it might be where to go. And just for thought. And then a second one for thought, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to attend this at the, at the convention for, in, for school committee on Saturday on October eighth. They're going to have a call, Student Voice Luncheon at twelve, two, twelve and one. I thought it was very interesting when I was reading up on it, and unfortunately, I can't attend it because I committed to set up for our wine tasting event in the Whitman Town Hall. That being, you know...
Priorities.
Priorities, you know. Anyway, that being said, what it does is, you have past students who have graduated from the school, and you have a luncheon, just like we have when we have members of the trades come in and, and look at our, look at our classrooms and see exactly if we're up to standards. But these are students who have graduated from South Shore Votech, maybe are in the work industry for a couple of years, but then come back and say what, what they thought was good about them being taught, what they thought was good and what they thought was bad. We may learn. I mean, you know, sometimes we know, teachers learn from students. And I thought it was an interesting luncheon, and they're going to bring in students, and they're going to talk about it. Unfortunately, I can't attend, but I'm hoping that John is usually there, maybe he'll attend it, and we can bring them in and talk about it. I just thought it was interesting and maybe something that we may want to look into in the future.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment on Dan's comment. One of the, one of the tasks that we are undertaking this year is that we are going to be reaching out to graduates going back up to five years. So in that, I think in that same spirit, you know, my first question to James when he walked in was, "So how are things going at school?" And, and of course, that's an important question, but embedded in that question also has to do a lot with us as a school. Did we prepare them? And I think as we go and we talk to people that are now in their early to mid twenties, and we find out what they're doing, and ultimately, we're looking to see, when you look in the rearview mirror and see how did South Shore Votech fit into your life and your career plan, it's important for us to know that we do care how people are doing after they walk across the stage and get their diploma. So I'll have more to say on that, definitely, as this year progresses.
Because I know when my son graduated from here and he went on to college, the first year of college, he took courses that he had to pay for, but he took a test and passed out of it because he had it here.
Right.
Right, but he had to take it in college, you know, and pay for it. He just tested out, he took another, took another subject. And I found that with a couple of students. So that shows you how well we're training our students. And, but, you know, there's always room for improvement. I thought it might be a good way of getting some backfeet from the students that have graduated.
And this is the Saturday of the conference you're saying?
Yeah, this is the Saturday of the conference. It's between twelve and one, and I'll be setting up tables and putting cable cloths and not drinking the wine, but putting and setting it up.
Who was the night before?
Huh?
Who was the night before?
I'll be down, I'll be down the cape. I can't.
Haven't cloned him yet.
Okay, I have one, it's not a request for action, but open for the restaurant sign, I thought it was very good, until I went to Rockland today, and it was at, I call it Suzie's Store, the Bargainer, and somebody knew me, and they said, "You know, Bob, we saw the sign in front of the school today." I says, "Yeah, it's kind of nice, isn't it?" She says, "But I didn't know it was open to the public." So I, back in the comment, maybe we could add open to the public for those hours. You know, I just assumed, you know...
Yeah, advertise that local baker's, you know, who can express it, yeah.
But that's just a comment, that's all. Nothing else from anyone? Motion to adjourn. Citrus?
Second.
Second, Whitman? Any discussion, then? All in favor? So be it.